All right, at 6 o'clock, we will call the committee of the whole meeting to order. If the clerk would please call the roll.
Morevka.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
All right, approval of the minutes of the April 22, 2019 Committee of the Whole Meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Not a motion to accept as presented.
No move.
Second.
Motion by trustee March, seconded by trustee Morevka.
March?
Yes.
Morevka?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Item four, public comment. No public comment. We'll move on to item five, discussion of Homewood disposal contract extension, changing the billing and collection for garbage service starting next quarter to Homewood disposal.
So in your packet, you have an addendum to the current contract. So we have a contract with Homewood Disposal for our refuse collection. And currently, we, the village, do the billing for that. And since we sold the water and sewer system, taking a look at it, think probably that it would be a little bit more efficient if the billing part of the what we do would be given to Homewood Disposal. They do it for other communities. So I talked to them, and in doing so, we looked at how we could do that. And a contract extension was discussed. So that is what that addendum talks about. So we, our contract would go to 2022, and they asked for a two-year extension if they were to take over billing, and an additional cost of $1 added on to the unit price. So in our current contract, the billing goes up incrementally every year, and so it'd add a dollar to that incremental cost per unit. And that, right now, the village would probably have to look at doing something similar because we don't, everything we do for hard costs comes out of the general fund. We don't collect anything in addition to cover that. So anything like the paper bills, the postage, the staff time, so that would all be given over to Homewood Disposal for a dollar per unit. So as of July 1, 2019, the bills would go from $16.55 per unit to $17.05 per unit. If they, it would go to Homewood Disposal, it would go up to $18.05. So that's the cost difference we're talking about, transferring the billing over to Homewood Disposal versus the village. It costs us in paper bills alone, $750 per quarter. We bill on a quarterly basis. So it would be staff's recommendation that the village go ahead and bill for this quarter coming up in July, and then we work with the village residents to do any kind of collections necessary to get any arrears that we have outstanding taken care of in the next 90 days, and then turn the billing over to Homewood Disposal. And then, you know, we have in the addendum how that collection process would be gone through them, and, you know, we would still be, you know, in partnership with them to make sure that the bills would get paid. But right now, we're just kind of a middleman, and it's really inefficient and not very cost-effective for the village to be doing the billing right now. So I just wanted to talk with you about that because we would like to start, you know, getting the residents notified that a transition would take place, and then I wanted you to see the addendum to the contract and bring that back to you for approval if it's something that you would like us to move forward with.
Well, I think it's a great idea. I've always, you know, ever since we came up with the idea of selling the water and sewer system, I thought it was silly that we continued to bill for garbage. And just saw the residents now like pointed out, we don't make any money on the garbage, whatever we collect goes right to...
We're losing money, probably.
We're losing money because we pay for postage. It made sense when we were sending the bills out.
And we've also lost all control, collection, because there's no...
We can't shut off...
We can't shut off the water if they don't pay their garbage or if they don't pay their bills. So there's just no way that we can enforce collection on the garbage where if Homewood Disposal took it over, then they could stop service, you know, and effectively demand payment, you know, that way.
And we also...
And they're here, Homewood Disposal's here, just in case.
You want to step up and introduce yourself, please? Come on, come up to the podium.
And here's like a sample bill of how their bill would look if it came, when they sent it, or just so you know, which is a lot more, is a less expensive initial bill that would go out than we're sending at the moment.
And it'll also offer the residents the ability to pay online as well, which is nice.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm Frank Hilligan with Homewood Disposal. And we also offer the paperless PDF billing, email bills, same paper, you know, and they can do the online as well. So, yeah, this is just a service we do. I was checking today, asked a question, I think we currently quarterly invoice over 75,000 homes. So it's...
So would it continue to be a quarterly billing?
Yes, starting on COVID first.
Mark.
And then, I mean, and the best way to do it, when Amy did it was, you know, I didn't question, it was bringing up, it'd be nice to be able to put some last bill from the village, let them know, look for the new one.
Right.
Kind of get that transition. I think it's, you know, air falls out of the window, oh, okay, look what's going to happen, now Homewood's going to go through it. So, yeah, I mean, something to do, have the staff, they had costs, there's collections, and it is something to add, you know, if you were a portion of the same.
So one thing that came up, Jim, maybe you can answer this. Do we have an ordinance in place that says if you live in the village, you have to have garbage service?
I would absolutely believe we do. We have a garbage ordinance, and that is the typical requirement. I don't know any village that doesn't require that they have to have, you know, the service. So I can't remember off the top of my head.
Don't come and pick up my garbage, you know, right? Okay.
I mean, I want to look at the ordinance. There are some places that allow the resident to select another disposal company, but every ordinance in every village requires all homeowners or businesses to have the contract. I have one question for you, Frank.
Sure.
Our contract with you expires July 1, right?
2022.
2022?
And then we're asking for a two-year extension.
Yeah, that's my question. Aren't we supposed to look and see if we get any proposals that want to, from any other disposal? As I recall the statute, the statute says something about the, we can enter into the contracts, and of course, even if we get another proposal, we don't have to accept it, but I thought we had to wait for...
There's, there's no, I mean, I've been in municipal management for 25 years, and there's never been a statute that came up to say you're required to give proposals for extensions. The village is, right? I think this contract even has an auto renewal.
That's what I wanted to know. Does it have an automatic renewal for more years? Okay.
For, you know, in this contract term, and it happened before, I came aboard, it's for 10 years, and we're not going to come back, it's 10 years. Well, I mean, but, I mean, and then that's maybe too far out. I mean, so, you said two, but, yeah, it's, the village's discretion to do that, and yeah, that's, that's fine. And I guess going back to your first point, with the end goes with billing. I mean, the ordinance, I misunderstood you. Residents wouldn't have the, or...
I don't believe so.
$1 in the village.
I believe that's, that's the case.
And that's what we would want, is you...
Commercially, that's different.
Commercially, it's different.
But residentially, it's...
Right. You would want four different hours.
Correct, no, correct, no.
Okay. I just didn't know, I misunderstood.
He was asking what's in the ordinance, and I believe that's what's in the ordinance.
Maybe you could check just to...
Yeah, I'll look at it.
Because I, yeah, I agree, we only want one.
Yes.
Provider, you know, yeah.
Could you spell your last name for me?
Hilligan's. It's H.I.L.L.E.G.O.N.D.S.
Thank you.
And the changeover in billing, have you historically seen a problem that starts or, you know, raises a tad at the beginning of the billing process?
You know, it's, it's, it's getting worked out, the transition. I mean, granted, the best way to do it is if you have a water bill, and it's on the water bill. People want to take a shower, you know? So that's why it's very important to have a strong ordinance that requires service, you know, for health and safety reasons, you know? That's why we were asking that with Amy, you know, about the ordinance, because you lose your hammer when you, when you lose the water, you know? And so to work in partnership with the village is key to get the message out to the residents. That's why I thought it was good to present it tonight so that the village could put a notice in the water bill, you know, and it's right there. Oh, look, we're going to get a bill, and, you know, I think maybe another mailer or something, I have to go out and this remind residents or postcard, but I think the one going in the water bill, July, in the July, August, October, is imperative to really get a nice little transition. But yeah, you're going to have residents, when you see the postcard, and you go, mm-hmm. All right, so it's going to be a work in progress to get them accustomed to it, that's for sure. That's for sure.
Amy, have we had more trouble collecting for the trash since we sold the water?
We have, and we've had a little bit of an issue before, but we definitely have an issue now. So we have about 45 accounts that are in arrears. And what I'd like to do in this, in this period, you know, before we transition, is get some payment plans in place, try to get some accounts taken care of, and then, you know, if we don't have cooperation, you know, not let them even start service or, you know, work with Homewood Disposal, like, or you won't be able to transition until you get a payment plan in place. We really want to clean up some of these accounts that have gotten out of hand.
Are they like 30 days, 60 days, 90 days?
Yes.
Really?
What are they doing with their trash, just leaving it in their yard?
They're still getting service.
Yeah, service has not been stopped.
Okay.
Is it commercial and residential?
They're mostly residential. I mean, we don't deal with the commercial.
The commercial's built directly.
So they're all, they're all residential.
The commercial's already built directly.
Let's think of...
So I think direct staff to move forward, bring back the, for the next meeting.
Okay, we'll, we'll work with Jim and make sure we got some of the details worked out. And the one issue that we're going to have is that the type of billing that we use, the type of bills that we send out do not allow for, they're not envelopes, they're like heat sealed, then we can't put things inside of them, so we're going to have to send out an additional...
There's a comment section.
They've already been printed. So we're going to have to send out an additional mailer to let people know. So we will send out that initial mailer, and then we'll have to, you know, maybe send out another one, but they would need to send out, we're going to have to contact these people, these 45 accounts though, and let them specifically know that they have outstanding accounts they need to take care of because of this, so we'll take special care with them.
Very good.
I'd like to say too that they have the best staff of people of any refuse service around, I mean, dealing with other areas, and far and away the best, the most cooperative, the nicest, they go out of their way to accommodate, and it's really good.
Well, we've had a long history as a village, you know, with them.
But originally?
Yeah, here, yeah, absolutely. A and J. All right, thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, item six, discussion regarding the annexation agreement for the Suhas Patel Bagwadi Properties 1 LLC Travel Center and Hotel project. So Amy and the attorneys and the engineers have been working hard on this annexation agreement over the, gosh, a while.
Since I started?
Yeah. And it was, it was in progress a little bit before Amy came on board, so she, she came in, jumped right into the fire, and has, you know, done a fantastic job of keeping this project moving forward. And so I'm going to let her kind of run through where we're at right now.
And we have Gene here tonight, so he's been here since the beginning of the beginning, and he's here to answer any questions that we have. We have the TIF consultant here as well, because that's part of the mix also, so that's Steve Klein, he does have a name, so...
And Mr. Patel is here also.
Of course, the developer himself. So you have the agreement in front of you, and I hope you all stayed awake through that. It was a very long document, so you had that to read. That was the latest iteration of it, I suppose you could say, that you had, and we wanted you to see where we were from that perspective, but we also gave you a memo that we felt like was called out of you with the outstanding issues, so we wanted you to focus your attention, I guess, there, and, but if you have any other questions specifically on anything that jumped out at you from the agreement, let me know. There, called it, the annexation agreement is divided in sections, so I might refer to a section, but I'll give you the title of it, because I want to point out a few of the sections specifically that may be important. So really, Dr. March, I think you mentioned the last meeting we were at, you know, about kind of engineering and the final engineering and things, and that's kind of one of the first things on the memos, is that the final engineering is not done yet, and, you know, Mr. Patel mentioned that he could have his team ready to go like that, and, you know, I think he's looking for some feedback from this group tonight, whether he can do that, and if, if we're ready to go and move forward, and you can see from that memo that, you know, that's, that's up to you if you want to proceed with your final engineering, that would be helpful for the project, and that's something we'd be waiting for, and Jim, you can jump in on any of these.
Oh, the final engineering is necessary for some of the provisions of the annexation agreement.
Right, and it's kind of holding us up on some things, but...
Right, and, you know, the other things, I guess, that, you know, as the memo points out, there's, there's issues with regard to the, some of the reimbursement issues with the village costs.
But you have the chart in there. Mr. Patel and I had kind of discussed some of the fees there, who would pay for what, and so we broke it out into that, that schedule, so we're still working some of those things out. That's, that's an outstanding issue that we can, we can continue to discuss. You know, the TIF, whether the TIF is approved or not, that's obviously one, and it ties into reimbursement of costs and how things can get paid back also, so that's one outstanding thing. I passed out to you, and it's in your packet, you know, revenues, this is the most current sheet, and Steve can kind of go through it and explain it if you guys are interested in having some of this described in more detail, but we can, and we can do that.
Can I just, Patel, have you seen the memo from the attorney?
No, probably not.
Oh, probably not. Okay. Do you want to comment on it? I mean, one of the issues was reimbursement of the cost. Do you have an issue with that at all, or?
No, I think it's, he's, he has that...
Yeah, he's, he's seen this.
Yeah, he's seen that.
But I'm just saying, and here, there was, like, he said he wanted to have a cap on the cost.
Well, he suggested a cap, and we said no.
Yeah, so you're okay.
I came up with that, the spreadsheet that has, you know, the sum of the cost, if you can split it, I can have some, I take it, you know, so, I think it's fair, you know, the spreadsheet, you know, from my perspective, and I think that will take care of most of the, you know, the fees, and I came up with all the line items that possibly can happen to the projects.
So that's not a sticking point?
Well, that's up to you guys.
Right.
You know, you can see the spreadsheet to see who's agreed to pay for what and how. It's just, we also had the, the issue with the easements, but I believe that's kind of been resolved because you want us to get those easements, but, you know, that takes whatever time it's going to take, and the idea is, is that if we had to get them after the annexation agreement was entered into, so be it.
Yeah, because otherwise, the whole thing would be a disaster, you know?
Well, right, but see, we can't, we can't deliver the easements, we can cover the issue in the annexation agreement, but we have to be a little bit careful there because if we're going to acquire the easements, then obviously it's going to take whatever time it takes. Now, Amy was talking to them, I believe, and hopefully it won't be an issue, but in the event, somebody or a property owner wouldn't voluntarily do it or essentially sell us the easement, whatever you've got to do, then our only option is obviously eminent domain, and, you know, what that means, we have to go into court and take the property, and that takes time.
So the easement we're talking about is...
For 88.
88th Avenue on the west side so that we can build the road.
Right.
And he obviously needs the road, so the, the property is accessible. So that would be on the west side, so the property that's not controlled by Mr. Patel.
So Jim, are these fees that the village would pay, are those reimbursable by the TIF?
By the TIF, most of them all are, I believe. Yeah, I didn't look at every single one, but most of them would be. Question would be how much money we have in the TIF to cover all the, to cover everything we have to reimburse. You know, the big ticket item, of course, is the property.
Right.
And, you know, I looked briefly at this, you can ask on the, on the projected TIF revenues, but, you know, you can see in what they essentially are projected to be.
So the reimbursement, like, some of the TIF money, we're going to reimburse Mr. Patel for some things.
Yeah.
And, you know, obviously, there's a lot of stuff, including the land purchase that the village is going to have to reimburse for.
Correct.
So, you know, I tried to figure out in the annexation agreement, but how is that divvied up? Like, who gets the money first, or, you know what I'm saying? As the TIF money comes in, who has to wait for their portion?
Depends on what, what we agree to in that agreement as to who would have first call on the money, the TIF revenue. And I believe that, I don't know, as we have anything on that for, for the property reimbursement, not sure.
We, we mentioned the property reimbursement in here.
And just generally, I, I'd have to look at it again, you know, Terry's doing the agreement, of course, but yes, we would be able to draw on TIF money as part of the reimbursement. And what else is Mr. Patel getting reimbursed for? I can't recall.
In this document, we only mention 88th Avenue for Mr. Patel.
Okay, so that would be...
I mean, that's...
But this is not a redevelopment agreement.
No.
So we haven't, but that, these are the only, those are the only two items we mentioned in here. Any, is there any comment from you, Steve, on that at all? This versus a redevelopment agreement? I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I kind of do.
No, yeah, go ahead.
Steve here, or? Yeah, why don't you go up there, and guess, that way everybody can see you. Don't trip over the cord.
This, by the way, is the first time I've seen this list.
Yes.
And so I would, it's appropriate, I would appreciate our having the opportunity to review the notes, the memo regarding the annexation agreement as well. We have begun to review the annexation agreement. We too had some questions about it, and as it relates to the use of the TIF funds and the revenue projections that we've provided to you so far, our own revenue, we're only looking at one part of the equation because we have no information regarding any of the costs. So the next iteration or two away from this one is going to start to need to reflect those costs, so you can begin to discern how you want to use this revenue, which lines of, sources of revenues are going to be applicable for certain kinds of reimbursements, and who gets reimbursed first. I will say typically, and I haven't been involved in the negotiations to this point, I'm just speaking generically about projects like this, our experience has been that when the village has substantial investment initially in a project, whether it be for land or for the construction of a road, or whatever it may be, or easements for that matter, that typically it is, it is our practice to look at the TIF redevelopment agreement, which would be separate, and in addition to the annexation agreement, that would then really lay out in more detail how these costs are going to be covered, reimbursed, and used responsibly for which. And we generally would look for the, the best way for the village to recapture its costs first out of the available revenues, and then to be able to reduce the risk to the village, obviously. You know, we'll be looking at, with Jim, we'll be looking at various requirements with regard to recourse that may already be provided in the annexation agreement or not, that might need to be supplemented in the redevelopment agreement. And, but the good news is that, and we can speak, if I can, I'll speak to this for a minute, if that's all right. The revenues that we're looking at that have been projected based on Mr. Patel's information that he's provided to us so far would suggest that there's going to be a healthy revenue stream available to the village to work with. So that's very encouraging, and we're, you know, we're close here to getting into the statutory process for establishing the TIF district. Just as an aside, we have completed the majority of the work with regard to reviewing the characteristics of the area for the business development district, which is, we can look at later, but that's a bigger, geographically, it's a bigger area right now than what we're, you're initially looking at for this TIF district, for this site, but it includes this site, okay? So we don't see, at this time, we don't see any reasons to be concerned or any pending problems or impediments for you to be able to establish the TIF district or the business development district, so these revenues should be available to you. The, the spreadsheet, and I will not take the next hour to go through this in detail, that is the reason why we gave this to you in two pages. With the second page, at your leisure, your convenience, we've provided you with pretty solid footnotes here as to each, how each source has been calculated at this point based on the variables and the data that's been provided to us. But let me just run down through the, basically, the seven or eight sources of revenue that I believe have been mentioned or discussed so far in your efforts to work through this with the developer. And the first one, we'll go row by row here on the front of the spreadsheet, and do make sure you have the one that's dated 6/24/19 up in the left-hand corner, because it's, it's the newer revised version even from last week. The TIF revenue tax, TIF real estate tax increment is based upon the real estate values that are shown in Table 1 down in the left-hand corner. This is what we were able to extract from the material that Amy had forwarded to us from Mr. Patel with regard to the anticipated real estate improvements, the value of the improvements to the land for both the hotel and the travel center. And you'll see that the fair market value for each of those is shown in Table 1, the hotel being about $6.8 million and $13.5 million for the travel center. We're using the 33 and 1/3 assessed valuation unless we learn that there are reasons why it should assess differently. This is typical and common for commercial projects in downstate Illinois. And then the TIF base value, so the two properties, the pin numbers that this project will span across currently has an assessed... across currently has an assessed valuation that will be known as your base EAV, your base assessment, once TIF District Number 2 has been established. That's, if you're looking at Table 1 down in the left-hand corner, that's the $189,092. That has to come off of and be deducted from the new taxable value that will be on the property after the improvements have been completed. And then the difference is what is multiplied by the real estate tax rate. And right now, we're using your 2018 Payable 19 real estate tax rate, the 7.9, over in Table 3, the 7.94980 would be the rate as if this property was already annexed to the village. So the first year that real estate tax increment would be available, assuming that the project is completed in 2021, constructed in 2021, the first full year of real estate tax would be assessed for tax year 2022, and the real estate tax increment, the money would begin to be received by the village in 2023. And for that first year, the combined real estate tax increment between the hotel and the travel center is estimated at $522,639. And that amount then, we have applied a 2% Consumer Price Index to show some increase in that assessed valuation going across through the remaining life of the TIF district, which would run through 2042 payable 2043, okay? So your cumulative real estate tax increment, again, based on the numbers we see right now, is close to $13.5 million over the life of the TIF district, okay? Any questions about the TIF projection? Jim, did you not get one? I have an extra one. Okay. The next one is row number two would be the business development district, the hotel and real estate, not real estate, I'm sorry, the retail sales tax that would be generated from the projects, okay? So upon establishing the business development district, the village will also impose, here we're assuming you intend to impose the full 1% of the business development district tax. Row number two combines the results of what you'll see broken down in Table 2 in the center at the bottom of the page. Business district tax is likely to generate about $75,000 to $80,000 annually. Just one point to make here is that with a business development district, the retailer's occupation tax and the service occupation tax are both collected by the department of revenue and is distributed back to the village, just the same as your share of the state rate that you get now. The hotel tax, through the business development district statute, is a tax that is collected directly by the village. So the department of revenue is not collecting that, the village will be collecting that directly from the travel, or from the hotel. Line number three then, we're taking the same anticipated retail sales projections Mr. Patel provided, and showing your 1% share of the six and a quarter, or 1% share of your state rate that you would be getting back in addition to the business development district. So that's your sales tax that you can use anywhere in town, right? That's your normal sales tax you're accustomed to receiving. Business development district tax will have to be used within the BDD area. The money received from row number three, the municipal sales tax, is essentially received in the positive general fund you can use anywhere in town. Line number four is the video gaming tax, and you'll see also in Table 2 at the bottom that between the terminals that are anticipated to be located in both the hotel and the travel center, the combined, what we'll refer to as the net terminal income, which is how the video gaming tax looks at that revenue, it's, that is collected by the Illinois Gaming Board separately. And essentially, it works out that the village gets back about 5% of the net terminal income that is received. The net terminal income means that on the gaming machine, you probably already have the video gaming already, because you're going to have people throwing orders of money into this thing, and then you have to subtract out the remaining, and you end up with a net amount that is then taxed, and that amount is calculated here, it's estimated at $720,000. 5% of that would be $36,000 a year. Unless, maybe discussed this already, and I'm not myself as familiar with the gaming tax, but from our initial review of the Act, it appears that that money too is received in your general fund.
Yeah. And usable for anything.
Yeah, it would be, it would be subject to the same uses or limitations that your general fund would have. Number five is the village imposed hotel tax. You don't currently have a hotel tax here.
Yeah, we do.
We do. I did not see, I didn't have reference to that. So you already have your 5%.
5% of the order.
Okay. You have other hotels here?
No.
No?
Anticipation.
It's sitting there waiting and ready. Yes. So that 5% is also collected by the, by the village. It's your responsibility to collect that from the vendor. Here, under that statute, there are limitations.
Restricted use, yes.
As to how you can use that money, it's to use for promotion, to try to encourage more visitors, overnight visitors, to peatone, so it's for advertising, promotion, convention-type activities. You'd not be able to use line number five, for example, for paying for the land, for the road improvements, okay? So there are some caveats here as we go through these revenue sources. The developer voluntary retail and fuel rebates are referred to in the annexation agreement, okay? If you saw those, we have no way of knowing or verifying what those amounts ultimately would be. We are essentially reciting the values that were provided to us from the annexation agreement, which I think are estimates from Mr. Patel. We did not include as yet in this line anything for the truck parking. It appeared to us that language was maybe still a work in progress.
It is, I believe.
And so not knowing whether or not that would actually be effective, or what the village's share of that would be, or how that would be handled ultimately, we didn't include it just yet. So potentially, there's another stream of revenue, but we haven't included it at this point. And maybe you've addressed this, it might have been something you looked at in the memo that Jim Spurne provided to you, but it wasn't clear to us as to the term, how long that would go for those voluntary rebates. So we've run it out for the life of the TIF district, but I've seen reference in other material provided to us that it could be for some shorter designated period of time. So I don't know how that's going to be ultimately available to you, but for right now, we've shown it going the full term of this, of the TIF district and the BDD running concurrently. That's $224,000 a year, which is basically a form of a profit sharing, is the way it looks to us. So it's not a tax, it would be contributions that the developer would be providing to, directly to the village. The motor fuel tax, we have no idea, we have no, really no way accurately estimating what your take of the motor fuel tax would be. That is determined by the Department of Transportation. Your motor fuel tax comes to the municipality based on your population, it's a proportionate amount that's made available to all municipalities in the state, essentially the same way, but the Department of Transportation has a really long list of priorities that have to get covered out of motor fuel tax before they even make a portion or a percentage of new motor fuel tax available to municipalities. So here again, we're, we're just, we're mentioning it, that it could potentially be another source of revenue for you increase, but we don't really have a good way of measuring that at this point, okay? So, you know, in all, when you look at the cumulative numbers and you wrap it around clear to the end, that $24 million of revenue over the next 23, 24 years is a healthy number to work with. And so it'll be a good problem to have, to try to figure out how to divide that pie. But I think your bread and butter sources of funding for recapturing the land, and to the extent that the village is borrowing or fronting money for the road improvements are going to come out of the TIF, the BDD, and probably your sales tax are going to be your three probably paramount sources of revenue that we're going to want to look at for recapturing those costs, okay?
So the voluntary stuff, you know, the retail fuel rebate, can that just be put in the general fund? That money?
Frankly, I would assume it would be, but that, I would leave to Jim's call, I mean, I'm not, it's not a TIF revenue, so it's, it's some kind of voluntary contribution. Presumably to a tax-exempt entity, there would be some tax benefit to the, to the developer for doing this as well, but that $224,000 a year would be in your general fund, and then you would be looking for authority other than the TIF Act or the BDD Act to allow you to use it for these project costs. Eric?
Yeah, and in the general fund with that, so we could either segregate it out if we wanted to, it just does a line kind of item, but yes, it could be used for the redevelopment costs or to reimburse.
Does that extend to the district, or can it flow back to anywhere?
No, it can't go anywhere.
It can flow back to the community?
And certainly if you're using it for a public infrastructure, it's, I would assume it would be regarded as the same as any other general fund revenue source that you'd be receiving, and you'd be able to use it. I think the question might come in, in that if you ever wanted to use any of that for whatever reason, I know he's paying it to you, but if it was somehow being paid back to him, I think that's when we would need to look at other authority perhaps that you would need in order to be able to do that. So it's kind of a one-way in into the general fund, use it for all kinds of public purposes, but as far as using it for some type of private reimbursement for this or any other project, I think we would need to be looking at some other authority to do that.
You used an escalator for the real estate taxes, but you didn't escalate any of the other costs?
No.
Is that just typical for these type of taxes?
It is for us.
Okay. So it's a conservative approach?
We can, yes, so we can pretty well vet just about any community in the state of Illinois that your real estate taxes, barring a major recession, your real estate taxes are going to go up a little bit every year. And so we think that 2% is a pretty safe percentage right now, it's probably going to be more than that. Inflation's probably going to be higher in the next few years than 2%, but we feel comfortable with that. We don't apply CPI to any kind of sales tax or other stuff that we're revenue sources because there's too many variables to try to account for.
Are these projections compared to the original projections we got from Mr. Patel a couple of months ago?
They're much higher.
These are higher?
Yes.
Real estate taxes, I think, are way higher.
And, and these are also projected out for 23 years, so Mr. Patel's was just for one year, so.
Well, one other thing, I think you've got, we've also got to get to the point where we, we look more carefully at your real estate improvements, and that we pull out of there any FFNE, any furniture fixtures, equipment that would not be subject to real estate tax. We've got to make sure that the values we're using here are purely buildings and improvements to the land, which to this point, we're assuming that the numbers we have represent that. But if it included, for example, in the hotel furnishings and the beds and the, you know, cabinetry and all that kind of thing, we'd have to pull that out, we wouldn't use the values that we're using. So I have not had an opportunity to speak with Mr. Patel.
Yeah, I don't know either. I don't know where, those are Mr. Patel's numbers, I suppose.
Those would be included in this number, so we'll take those out.
The equipment would be?
Yeah.
So I, so...
Support of project cost, if you look out.
All right. So the real estate tax increment would be overstated for that reason.
Well, the other sense, you know, like the truck parking, you know, that we have, I think we are projecting almost close to $80,000, you know, whatever the language we are working on, but the money part is still the same, you know, it's staying, you know, as part of the agreement. You know, the only thing I ask for is, you know, if I'm running some promotions, you know, just to get some more business, and if I don't charge any, you know, any parking overnight, I wanted, you know, the village to, you know, to be aware of, you know, like, you know, if they say they're on a promotion for a month, you know, for everybody to, you know, for a free parking instead of charging $10, that that would be, you know, something that, you know, I would not collect, so I would not take, you know. That was the only thing that we are working out. But other than that, the parking and the fees and the $2 reimbursement is part of the annexation agreement, so there's about $80,000 that can be added on to these projections.
Assuming you charge.
Yes. Terry and his attorney are talking about all those things and working out the remaining parts of the, of the agreement.
So our, our, my would hope is that the next round of this, we would have some fairly reliable cost numbers that we could also look at, that we, for public and private redevelopment costs, that we could also compare then with the revenue sources to see how they line up, and we could further refine the TIF projection to make sure that it more accurately reflects.
I'm not sure, but I think we have an estimate on 88th Avenue now, don't we?
Yes, we do.
Which is probably, you know, aside from the land cost, which, you know, you're, you're aware of, is probably the biggest cost by, by far.
I can, uh...
You know, that is just, we know that's just sitting out there. I think the engineers have given us an estimate on that already.
Do you want to involve parkings for that?
For the engineering?
For the road?
For the road?
Yes. I have two different...
You don't want to talk about it?
No, so I think it would, about 1.3 million from the village's engineer construction.
So even if you rounded it off to 2 million, and you're millions, three or whatever for the land, you know, you're going to be able to get that back inside of a few short years.
Yeah, four or five years by this estimate.
Anything else?
Maybe.
And then you also need to keep in mind, when you see these big dollar amounts, and after you've worked through and negotiated with Mr. Patel, to what extent any of this will be reimbursed back to him, then obviously, there's more you could do with your share of these funds, and, you know, we'll have to be careful that you don't overcommit, you know, the village to a really healthy high number here that looks wonderful right now, because things do happen, so I'm putting the municipal advisor hat on now already, but... So we're putting the municipal advisor hat on now already, but that's where we want to be cautious with you and try to look at some various scenarios, try to best utilize the rest of the funds that will be available to you. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
So just maybe two, two more items while we've got a couple more minutes left in committee of the whole. In Section 11, that is the tax increment financing section where it does touch on, you know, the TIF, page 31. The developer did ask for a provision in there where if the TIF District didn't get approved, that those additional fees and revenues to the village could in, in part be utilized, not in full, but in part be utilized to pay back or reimburse him for some of the infrastructure costs. So I would just point that out to you. And, and you heard what Steve said about maybe there would need to be some additional items put in place by the village to make sure that could, that could happen, or whatever those need to be. Again, it went into the general fund, but it needed to come out to be, to reimburse him if the TIF didn't, wasn't put in place.
Yeah, Steve, I don't see any reason, it looks like there's eligibility, and there would be no reason why we would anticipate that the TIF wouldn't be in place within a year, right?
It'll be in place by August.
Okay, well, that's.
And that we don't have to worry about that provision, but it is in there, so you're aware. And then Section Nine is on page 24, and this goes to, so we've talked about revenues, and we've talked about what this project is going to generate in revenues. And one of those costs that we haven't yet totally put together in spreadsheet or anything, one of those costs would be what we'd call an incentive to incentivize this project to come here. And I would possibly even call it minimal, and that is the acquisition of the two parcels. That's Section Nine, if you guys haven't seen that. So how that would occur as far as what's in this annexation agreement is the village would actually acquire the two parcels that Mr. Patel is looking at to locate the project on. Then, upon closing, the village would ask for construction details for the project. We would not want to be stuck with a piece of property that we don't really need, but for this project. So we would ask for a construction schedule upon the closing by the village for these two parcels. Then third, the developer then would demonstrate to the village that he is the financial wherewithal to make this project happen. That is part of the deal, because we want to know that he can make this project happen. We want to incentivize an actual deal, an actual project on this property. So that's why we're asking for these provisions. The property is about 1.3 million, that's what the village would purchase those parcels for. And then, we would then transfer the property back to, so that can be part of this financial package. So that would be the incentive that the village would be providing as part of this deal to happen.
The price of those properties is already fixed. I've negotiated.
It's under calendar.
Yes, it's under calendar. And it's in written agreement.
I have a question for, you know, Steve. Is there a possibility to put this in an enterprise zone?
I think that that's up to whatever the village's efforts have been up to this point, the area, I think, qualifies and you'd be included as long as you've got one that's got the bridge willing to share with you.
Right. I don't know that we would qualify at this moment for an enterprise zone, maybe in the future if maybe we could piggyback on another enterprise zone application, it's a competitive process through the state, it's something I believe I'd be definitely willing to explore.
Because that would really help you in setting up the sales tax and the revenues. There's a lot of other benefits.
Yeah.
That would not impact a lot on line of this projection, you know, for the village.
We currently don't have any enterprise, we don't have an enterprise zone.
No, no, and we would not be approved for one in time for your project, I can guarantee that.
It's too bad.
I know, I know. It's definitely would save you a lot of money, I understand.
This money is just, it's, a lot of us are hurting, it's the extra money that I can use. Anyway, any advice for me?
Are you going to start your final engineering after today?
I mean, yeah, everybody's ready.
Okay.
I need to start putting my applications for IDA franchise, $20,000. I guess maybe it's my, it's not, you know, everybody, they want their fees, they want to sign contract for six months.
I mean, there's just some other very minor things we have to discuss and agree upon, what kind of liquor license, we, we've talked about that a little bit and.
That's really going to come after.
Yeah.
Because we're not promising the liquor license in the annexation agreement, but I don't anticipate there's going to be.
I would stop.
No, and I don't anticipate there's going to be a real problem with that.
We, we've submitted the, the road permit to Will County and so we're.
Are we, since we're on the hook to get the permits for the road, right, the villages? So are we anticipating any problems with our friends from Will County?
Not anticipating any, no.
Are we concerned?
No, we're really not. I mean, we had a, we had a pre-chores here and, and so, are you anticipating anything?
Come in, Troy.
Are you anticipating any problems with Will County on our, our permit application?
For the road.
And, and the intersection at Will.
I think Will County will work with us to make work. I'd be more worried about IDA, near the ramps.
Yeah.
So I think Will County will be willing to work with us. It'll be just to see what IDA is going to make us do because of just being so close to those ramps and we're changing some guardrail and striping right by them, so.
Yeah.
We submitted to IDA a few weeks back, and they're trying to figure out who's going to review it, so that's where we're at.
So they're aware.
Yeah, they're aware of it. And I, I was at a meeting at IDA and I talked to staff on it a few weeks ago too, to try to get, while I was there, so.
Good. There's been a lot of talk, discussion, you know, by staff, you know, on this, as you all know.
Yeah, of course.
This hasn't been a, an overnight thing for sure, but like I said, I certainly appreciate Gene's work on this and Mr. Patel's interest in peatone and all of Amy's work on this, and I'm, I'm excited about it. I think it's a great thing for the village, I really do.
I think it's a great, you know, reinvestment of some of the money that we got from Aquas and what we kind of have been shooting for a long.
That was, that was part of the, part of the plan.
Yeah, and so I think, you know, seeing these numbers, you know, I think whatever investment that we make in here, you know, the village is going to make it back, you know.
And, and to me, to me, the big thing is getting the west side of 57 open.
Yep.
And what's going to come after that. I mean, it's not just this project, you know, there's, there's going to be more.
Yeah.
Once this is open, you know, it's going to continue to grow.
But we need something of size.
But we need something of size there, which we have.
That's what this is.
And that's what this is, exactly. This is the catalyst to a lot of future development, you know, on the west side and even on the east side. I mean, it's going to encourage, you know, those properties to be developed also. So I think this is, it's huge for the village.
And it kicks off, kicks out a whole bunch of money revenue for the village, and it doesn't add kids to the school district, and it doesn't add all the problems of starter homes and that kind of stuff, so.
Correct. Anything else, Amy, for this?
No.
So we are planning on July the 8th, correct?
Yes, yes.
Having the annexation hearing?
Yes.
So we'll have a final draft?
Yes.
At that time? Hopefully, yes. If not, then we'll have to postpone it, but.
And it's at, at the school.
Right, we're holding the public hearing. That meeting will be at the auditorium?